All right, good evening, everyone. Want to call this Board of Commissioners meeting to order for Monday, August the eighth of two thousand twenty-two. I'd like to welcome each one that's in our audience here this evening and those who are joining us by TV. And the first item of business, we're going to have our invocation. And the Senior Pastor of New Vision Baptist Church, Ashley Kraus, will be coming to lead us in that. And then we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance to our American flag, and Commissioner Robbie Wilkie will lead us in that. So Pastor.
Let's pray. Dear Father, we thank you for all the things that you have blessed us with throughout our lives. Father, we thank you that we still live in a place where we can elect officials who will come and to do the things for us. We thank you we live in a place where they allow us to come and to pray for them and to pray over them. So Father, we just ask tonight, as they do this business, that you'll give them the discerning ears to hear what it is they need to hear. Give them the clarity of mind so that they can know what it is they need to do. And give them the boldness to make the stands they need to make. And Father, we thank you for your protection throughout this all. We thank you for your presence even here in this building, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag, tithe and salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we had a last edition on Friday. This will be item P. This is a grant that the Division of Water Quality and Conservation received called a strap grant for stream bank restoration. The target is the Lower Creek area, and we'll discuss that in a little bit if you want to add that to the agenda. No money out of pocket for the county.
All right, here in the amendment of item P, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the county manager and clerk have presented.
All right, any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that carries unanimously. And our first item is a presentation from Brian Moore, our Caldwell County Chamber of Commerce Executive Officer. I guess would be a term maybe, Brian, but you come and give us an update about the Chamber of Commerce and all the good things that's going on in Caldwell County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We really appreciate the opportunity and time. Today, I'm focusing in specifically on tourism and all the work that we've done here in Caldwell County for our tourism perspective. I'm not going to read every one of my twenty-some-odd slides, but I will highlight some of them. You can each have a packet of the information there for further information as you see fit. I'd like to start with, our objective, really from the Chamber's perspective, is to promote and market Caldwell County very well. Our objective there really tries to highlight the cultural history, breathtaking natural resources, fun and exciting events, and a broad base of visual and performing arts, and how do we best do that with our work that we have going on. We are supported at the Chamber of Commerce by different committees. We have a very strong tourism committee, and as I look around, I'm not sure if we have any of our tourism folks here with us tonight. We invited a few of them. Our board members that serve are Leslie Gray from Colson Park Entertainment at Bose, Jim Engelmann with Edward Jones, Chase Weinberger with Town of Sawmills, they are on our board. And then community representatives from the Arts Council, the Heritage Museum, Western North Carolina Sculpture Center, Blue Ridge Energy, the Midford Museum, and we do have an open seat from a person that just resigned. So those are folks that help us make good, strong decisions from the Chamber of Commerce perspective on how we best promote, and we have a lot of great opportunity moving forward. We are in good partnership with the City of Lenore, their tourism authority, and the Chamber Tourism Committee work close hand in hand with a lot of projects. And I'm going to highlight a few of those things that we work with together to best promote Caldwell County. We have some great regional tourism partnerships, the Blue Ridge Heritage Trail, the Catalaba Valley Ale Trail, number of them that are up there. One highlight is a very new designation we've received from the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation, and to be designated as a gateway community for the Blue Ridge Parkway, which is a fantastic opportunity for us to tap into the millions of visitors that go to the Parkway every year and other avenues that we have with Yakon Valley Heritage Foundation, Overmountain Victory Trail, and many, many other partnerships that we participate in to help promote our assets here in Caldwell County. ExploreCaldwell.com has a fairly new skin on it. We relaunched that earlier in the year this year with a focus on making sure visitors that are coming to Caldwell County can discover and find lots of great things to do here and discover more about our community. There's lots to see, and I encourage everyone in the audience and our commissioners as well to be able to take a look at ExploreCaldwell.com at your leisure. We have some really good statistics. I'm not going to bore you with all of them, but we have visitation to our Explore Caldwell site is up and continuing to grow. When you break it down into seasonally, we're pretty much diverse seasonally with a number of folks that come to our website for the Chamber of Commerce and for Explore Caldwell specifically. When you take it and break it down into three-month segments, you see that we do have furniture, hiking, that are popping up on the list, Happy Valley cabins, downtown, lots of keywords that people are searching for when they get to our area. You have some consistency as you move into future months, furniture again, hiking, Wilson Creek pops up. Continue to see Wilson Creek furniture, scenic drives, which is not proposed for this evening's agenda. And then continuing things for outdoor activities, Happy Valley hang gliding. You get into the winter months, you do see Christmas trees, snowboarding and things like that pop in. Not necessarily you can do them here, but we do recognize the fact that those are assets that are close by to us and people are coming through our area to be able to enjoy. We've done a number of promotions in the course of the last twelve months. Sculpture Lives Here was a big promotion that we did in recognition from the Sculpture Edition that was in Our State Magazine. And we've done a number of things with Our State Magazine. We've done some email blasts with them celebrating winter. And we've also done a big thing for the fall last year. We had some really good success rates with sending information out through Our State Magazine. That's just a sampling of a few things that we've done from a marketing perspective, and there's plenty more to be shared if anyone has any additional information that they would like to see. We are getting ready to jump into the fall, so staying ahead of the game, we'd like to have some fall photography assets. So we're looking at how do we break down our entire county and look at what good things would be available for us to promote in the future and having the photography or video assets that help us do that. You may have seen our new billboards that are up on Highway three twenty-one. We have TakeThreeTwentyOne.com, which is a new marketing initiative that we launched in the early part of the pandemic. We did that in partnership with the City of Lenore. We were able to garner some CARES Act funds to get that jump started. We launched this site in April and very excited to see it growing and going to a whole new level. I will give you a little bit more detail on that. The future of what the TakeThreeTwentyOne.com site will look like is going to be edited just ever so slightly from what you might see on your phone right now to something that looks a little bit more like that and might feel a little more like an app to find events, things to do, and discover more about our community. The TakeThreeTwentyOne.com initiative, I launched that from the perspective that this highway out here, Take Three, US three twenty-one, is going to get some renovation on it and some orange barrels, and we know that. And I figured in my seat at the Chamber of Commerce, our businesses and our business community that might have their revenue drop might come to us first and say, what are you going to do about it? So we tried to get ahead of the game and realize we know that construction is going to come. And we put this TakeThreeTwentyOne project together really simply to help our community and help if there was a news story from WBTV Charlotte saying, hey, if you're going up to an App State football game for the weekend or going leash hunting, go up four twenty-one. It takes everyone out of our community. We don't want that to happen. So we're trying to be way ahead of the game before that comes into play. We have brochures. We have ten thousand first-run brochures that have been distributed to visitor centers all around the southeast, and it's just a really great platform for us to be able to promote. We do have a hospitality pledge. Our businesses that are on this, we've asked them to sign a pledge so they can promote business to other businesses and really have a synergy from one business to another. And they have stickers there. We have, Commissioners, you have an example of those stickers that we have for businesses to put in their windows as well as that hospitality pledge. We have had some good placement for the official travel guide for North Carolina. We expect to have some more placements for that as well. Our website, we've already talked a little bit about that. There's some great statistic. We're seeing incredible traffic flow to ExploreCaldwell.com and that website. Lot of resources coming from organic search and social searches and pay-per-click opportunities that we have to get people to Caldwell County and ExploreCaldwell.com. I would like to hit on one topic area that is a growing, growing concern, which is the increased amount of vacation rentals in our community. Just in me keeping track of some data, for Airbnb rental units and VRBO rental units, we have grown for just the City of Lenore from eighty-five to hundred and three in the course of the last twelve months. And they continues to grow. We see good resources from that coming forth. And the small print there at the bottom gives you some resources of where those folks might be staying with Blue Ridge Mountain Rentals and a couple other different ones that are there. We're even seeing increases in Granite Falls and Colletsville as well, and total Caldwell County have a hundred and thirty-nine rentals in the community. We used to think it was just about our hotels. We have four hotels here, but there's a lot of activity coming in from these vacation rentals as well. There's a map there. It shows you some trends that are happening and some different things. We have looking ahead, the state of North Carolina is designating twenty twenty-three as the year of the trail as opportunities for us to be able to explore outdoor activities. We look forward to participating with the Visit NC folks and finding a little bit more how we can get on that bandwagon as well and get people to enjoy our community in the outdoors. Looking ahead, potential opportunities, putting together a full-fledged marketing plan will be something of critical importance for us from a tourism perspective through the Chamber of Commerce. We don't have one specifically as a full plan right now, but I think the opportunity is there for us to do so in the future. Better capture tourism data. Some of those data points I found were from free resources, and we may at some point in time pay for some additional resources to give us those data points that would be helpful for us to know who we are. Just to give you a data point that I'm aware of, and Shelley might correct me, but on every, any given Tuesday, three twenty-one has twenty to thirty cars a day out there, but on Friday, that number almost doubles to sixty or seventy. And those are folks all heading to the mountains. And normally, my tagline is people don't wake up on a Thursday morning and say, hey, honey, let's go to Lenore for the weekend. But we want to change that narrative. We do know that they're going to Boone and Blowing Rock, but we want them to stay here, find more inexpensive hotel options and great things to do within our community. Improved emphasis on tourism as part of our marketing plan, positioning Caldwell County with regional tourism assets that we have. And then potential ideas, brainstorming of countywide wayfinding and visitor kiosks. Lots of other ideas that we can come up with. I tried to make that as quick as I could and a quick little summary. Again, you guys have more detailed information in your packet there. We'd love to answer any of those questions for you if you have any right now or be available for you offline as well.
All right, anybody have any questions for Brian?
Just thank you for everything. It looks great.
Thank you. Thank you all.
It does look great, and I really appreciate you promoting our county and the tourism aspect of it because we do have a lot of cars that go through here.
We do.
These restaurants and things that are coming along on three twenty-one is going to help slow them down just a little bit.
That's right, exactly.
If you get them in somewhere else, we'd be doing good.
Exactly.
And Brian, I appreciate you taking the interest in the county. I know you've had that relationship with the city for quite some time, but I appreciate you taking the time to dig into what the county has to offer and being willing to look at those opportunities as well. So we appreciate you doing that.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Brian. Have a great evening.
All right. That brings us to our second item on our agenda, a resolution in support of the naming the John Muir Parkway in Caldwell County. Clay McQuarrie is with us this evening, and he's got some background information about all of this. So welcome, Clay.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And obviously, some of this is actually going to piggyback a little bit off of what Brian has been talking about to y'all tonight with tourism and what can we do to continue to develop that here in Caldwell County and make us even more attractive to people across our entire state and even outside of our state. But I want to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to present this tonight. I want to thank Donald Duncan as well for allowing me this opportunity. But I want to start by something very simple, and it's a famous quote that we've probably, most everybody in this room has heard before. And the quote is this, "The mountains are calling, and I must go." That famous quote is by a man by the name of John Muir, and he is considered the father of our national parks. And I've communicated all this with each one of you individually already. But a not-so-well-known quote that Mr. Muir also made is the drive from Roan Mountain to Lenore is, I think, the finest in America of its kind. Now, for a guy that's considered the father of our national park system, you couldn't ask for a higher praise for this area and what we can bring to the table. And that quote dates back to eighteen ninety-eight, when John Muir himself traveled from Roan Mountain to Lenore and actually stayed right here in the middle of downtown Lenore at the time as well. But I want to really hit on this, this fact sheet that I've given each of you. And this is going to hit on some of the key points as to what can we do with that quote to promote it and use it, just like Brian's talking about, for better tourism opportunities here in Caldwell County. So I want to start with this. The state of North Carolina currently has sixty-two scenic byways officially designated that allow motorists to experience a bit of our state's history, geography, and breathtaking scenery while raising awareness for the protection and preservation of these treasures. Now, the state also does a lot to promote this scenic byway program. As a matter of fact, speaking of tourism, I hold right here a copy of the state scenic byway guide. So they do a lot to try to use these state scenic byways and the communities they're in to attract people to those communities. Also, so you're aware, North Carolina scenic byways are chosen by NC DOT, and they are ultimately approved by the North Carolina Board of Transportation. Such scenic byway designations are a high honor. And obviously, with this quote, I think we have a unique opportunity. Now, I want to be clear, it is the state and NC DOT that ultimately makes this decision, but that brings me to my next point, which is the fact that local support is a key component of this decision process by the North Carolina Board of Transportation. And a local resolution of support from you as the Board of Commissioners would go a long way to getting the state to see the impact that this could have on our region. The next point is that NC scenic byways cost local cities and counties absolutely nothing. They are completely unfunded by NC DOT, just as they are today with that segment of roadway. North Carolina scenic byway designations also do not change any current roadway names or other designations that have already been made honoring that stretch of roadway. So in other words, if there is a local individual that you want to recognize or already has been recognized with a stretch of roadway, this would not change that in any way, shape, or form. It still presents that opportunity to do that. A state scenic byway name is actually more of a nickname, and again, it's mainly used for the purposes of tourism. The next point that I want to make really quickly is scenic byway names range from descriptions of the route to historical references and tours, and this is the one example that I really want to key in on. There's a state scenic byway right now called the Lafayette's Tour. That byway takes tourists on the historic route that General Marquis de Lafayette, a close confidant to George Washington, visited on his eighteen twenty-five tour of the U.S. In much the same way, what I'm hoping to do with John Muir's quote is to call this the John Muir Parkway and to highlight the fact that he traveled through this area and allowed people a chance to follow his exact route that begins or ends here in Lenore, depending on which way you travel that said route. The proposed John Muir Parkway would use Muir's travel through the region to highlight local history. And this is another key point that I really want to highlight here. We have some amazing local history here in this county. We have a lot to be proud of. But what are some ways that we can further highlight that local history? And this John Muir Parkway is one way, and I want to give you a couple of examples. US three twenty-one, which Brian talked a lot about tonight, and we're trying to tell people, TakeThreeTwentyOne. Well, this is a prime opportunity to do that. This Parkway would be on US three twenty-one going up the mountain from Lenore to Blowing Rock. It would provide that opportunity. But US three twenty-one, what a lot of people do not recognize and realize is that it used to be called the Lenore Blowing Rock Turnpike. And the Lenore Blowing Rock Turnpike was actually considered the best route into the Blue Ridge Mountains for its time. And this was the same route that Muir himself traveled and that he recognized was an amazing route into and out of the Blue Ridge Mountains. I think we need to tell that history about what a significant route it was. There are articles dating back to the late eighteen hundreds in the Charlotte Observer talking specifically about the fact that there was no better route in western North Carolina as a whole into the mountains than the Lenore Blowing Rock Turnpike, which is now US three twenty-one. Another key point is right here in downtown Lenore, not too far away from us here at the square. John Muir stayed at what was the Commercial Hotel here in downtown Lenore. That is now the Commercial Building where Dead People Stuff Antiques is currently housed. So literally, right here in the square, we have an opportunity for people to begin or end that route right here in downtown Lenore. And that is another way that, yes, we can get them on three twenty-one, but guess what? We can also get them off of three twenty-one and hopefully right here into downtown Lenore with this scenic byway. And the last point that I want to make here is about the Carolina Northwestern Railroad. The Carolina Northwestern Railroad was the narrow-gauge railroad that ran through here at the time, and it's actually also the railroad that John Muir used because once he arrived here in Lenore, he actually took the train from Lenore to Hickory on his way eventually to the Biltmore Estate in Asheville. And I'll quickly throw this in there just to give you the relevance of how much John Muir thought of this area because upon arriving at Biltmore and writing in a letter to his wife, the letter I mentioned earlier was in a letter to his daughter, but in a letter to his wife, he literally makes the quote that Biltmore's nice basically and everything, but then he says, "The forests are far inferior to those located between Roan Mountain and Lenore." So as blown away as you could be by the Biltmore Estate, he was even more blown away by what he saw here, just to emphasize that point. Last two points, this is the meat of the thing that I want to get across to y'all tonight. The proposed John Muir Parkway would use Muir's title as the father of the national parks and his well-known status as a famous outdoorsman in the hiking and outdoor communities to encourage interest in traveling this stretch of roadway and visiting local communities along the way, like here in Lenore and in Caldwell County. The proposed John Muir Parkway would also use Muir's revered status as an icon in the U.S. Department of the Interior and the National Park Service to further garner their interest in our area. In conclusion, I believe this presents a unique opportunity for us tonight to do something good for our area, to do something to promote tourism for our area, and to go back to the quote, "The mountains are calling, and I must go." Brian proved it tonight. They're coming to the mountains and droves. We all know it. Let's give them a reason to start or end that journey right here in Caldwell County. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Clay. So you've presented us or brought a resolution here tonight, and it is pretty lengthy, but the crux of it is now therefore been resolved that the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners urges North Carolina Board of Transportation to officially designate this stretch of roadway as a state scenic byway and to name it the John Muir Parkway in honor of Muir's travels on the route and the noteworthy quotes he made regarding the unique beauty and exceptional road quality contained along this historic segment of his Parkway journey. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution this evening as Clay has brought forth and asked for our support in naming the John Muir Parkway.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution that you just presented to us based off the information that Clay presented to us as well.
All right, is there any other discussion or comment?
Yes, sir. You know me, I'm always got something to say. Clay, I just want to take a minute and tell you how much I appreciate your efforts. The passion that you have for the outdoors shows, the passion that you have for your community shows. And you did a lot of research, and it's taken you a lot of time to find this information and to create this presentation that you've given us tonight. So if this gets done, it will be done because of your efforts and no one else's because nobody else would have done it. In fact, we didn't even know about it. So I want to commend you and thank you very much for bringing this to us this evening.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you, Clay.
We'll all echo that sentence. So all in favor of adopting this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So thank you, Clay, and maybe they'll listen to us.
We hope so. What's the next step, Clay?
The next step tomorrow, I'm actually, so just to let you all know as well really quickly, the town of Elk Park on the other far end of this byway, they've already voted in a resolution in favor of this. City of Lenore last week voted in favor as well. Tomorrow night, I meet with the Town Council for Blowing Rock to make this same presentation. I feel very confident that we will have the same level of support there. So at this point, by the end of this month, all this is going to be getting submitted to the state along with those local resolutions of support. to the state along with those local resolutions of support. This will probably play out, to be honest, until March, because that's when the North Carolina Board of Transportation usually has their meeting to consider new state scenic byways. So in March, we'll revisit this with the board. It's a twenty-member board, but I feel very confident that it'll get their support so long as we have the local support.
Fantastic. Thank you again.
Great.
All right, thank you, Clay. So next, we have a public hearing for a zoning request moving from residential agriculture's all-in to general business at twenty-three eighty-nine Connolly Springs Road. And Shelley Stevens is here this evening. So welcome, Shelley, our planning director.
Thank you, and thank you for all y'all do, and hope you're having a good evening. Just gonna wait on my PowerPoint here. I think that's the EDC PowerPoint, maybe. Thank you. Okay, so the only request we have from the planning department tonight is a rezoning request, and the rezoning request is the first of the year. And it's a request to go from residential agricultural zoning to general business zoning. And is my mic on? I'm not sure if people can hear me. Can y'all hear me? Okay.
I can hear you.
Okay. And the applicants are Daniel Alcantara Mendoza and Karina Abara Martinez, and they're also the property owners of the property in question for the potential rezoning. And this property is located in southwestern Caldwell County, off of Connolly Springs Road. A lot of you are familiar with the area. It's across the street from Covenant Baptist Church at twenty-three eighty-nine Connolly Springs Road, and that is just south of Lee Pearson Road, and we'll look at a map here in a minute. And the site in question for the proposed rezoning is currently a field on the western portion of the property with a home on the eastern side, and it is in the watershed-protected area of the county, but not the critical area, and there's no flood plain on the parcel, although, of course, a rezoning can occur either way. That's just helpful information to have when thinking about community welfare. And then the acreage, it's almost an acre, point eight-eight of an acre per their application and also the deed. And the surrounding zoning, similarly, is general business to the south and touching this parcel, so adjacent to the property is general business, and then to the northwest is general business, and then there's more residential agricultural to the northeast and west. And here's a map of the parcel, so you can see what it looks like there. And that information bubble just shows that it's point eight-eight of an acre pointing to the parcel. You can see Lee Pearson Road coming off to the left there, and then that's Connolly Springs Road, as mentioned, that it abuts. And we should all keep in mind tonight that a rezoning is for consideration of any potential use that's allowed in that zoning district and not just a proposed use that the applicant may be wanting to put there, because a rezoning, a zoning district, does go with the property in question and not with a particular individual or a particular site plan. So keeping that in mind, some people are interested in wondering what may go in the general business district here at this parcel, and the applicant is happy to allow people to know that they are interested in placing a food truck there, which is currently on an adjacent parcel, which is general business currently. So that's what they're hoping to do with the parcel. And DOT would not require for their site plan a driveway permit. They also would not require a traffic impact analysis, because they only require that for uses that would create more than three thousand additional vehicles per day of traffic, which is what they believe impacts adjoining roads based on their calculations. And there's also adequate places to park on the parcel, although it would not be for permanent dining or like sit-down dining, it would be for just takeout only. So that is the use that they're interested in, that they're happy to let you know about, which is in their application. But again, we have to keep in mind all potential uses that could go in the general business district when looking at this rezoning. And this is just a visual of the zoning, so you can see the green there is residential agricultural, the red is general business district zoning, and the parcel in question is that one that says thirty-nine-ten. So that's the highlighted parcel there, so you can see what that looks like.
So back up to that real quick, Shelley. The truck is currently sitting in that little sliver of business, right?
Yes, on their neighbor's parcel, that's correct.
Correct, that's what I thought.
And then also looking at this future land use map that we looked at briefly for location purposes, this is created based on public input, as a lot of you are aware, and it is part of our comprehensive plan, also created based on public input. And per state statute, we have to look at it, see if it's consistent with the request, and there is commercial zoning shown there above those two red nodes in the southwest quadrant of Caldwell County, if you look. And the comprehensive plan actually defines commercial, our land use colors there in our map, within the plan itself, and it does suggest general business can go in the red commercial areas on our future land use map. And so, given all that information, and the planning board and I, having looked at the comprehensive plan and the watershed ordinance and the zoning ordinance, and then the reasonableness and public health, safety, and welfare, we have to create a consistency and reasonableness statement and a recommendation for approval or denial. And so you can create your own consistency and reasonableness statement if you would like, you can use this that the planning board recommends. Or if you don't want to create your own, but you would like to deny the request, there is a draft denial in your packet as well. But this is the recommendation from the planning board, and then to go along with that, they would recommend approving the rezoning. Any questions?
Is there any structures on this property right now?
There is. There is a house, and that is a legally valid thing to be there, and they are aware that if they were to tear down the house, they wouldn't be able to build a new house there. Also, if they did not, if they left the house for more than six months, then that would be a use that wouldn't be allowed on that parcel any longer, and the applicants are aware of that, and they wanted to move forward with this. And you can also rezone part of a parcel, as long as you survey it out or somehow designate the area in question. But since this is less than an acre, they were not interested in doing that, they wanted to request the rezoning for the entire parcel.
So could the house be converted to business if we rezoned it?
Yes, it could. Mm-hmm.
Will this have any tax implication on that piece of property or the home there?
It'd be a question for the tax assessment.
Yeah.
I would assume that once you start operating a business there, then yes.
Yep, they'd have to pay the tax.
Yeah, but that would be in evaluation.
Right, would this dictate getting it reevaluated immediately? Or would that wait for the four-year revow to come around?
Change of use would probably be only in January, so it would be after that. We only base the evaluation on the land at that time.
Yeah.
And you sent letters to the neighbor and property owners, right? Any feedback or?
Yes, that's right. Kim did that both before this hearing by state law, and then she also did that before the planning board meeting as a courtesy additional notice, and we have not received any feedback.
Why are they wanting to do it if they've already got it set on a commercial or business piece of land?
I think, I'm not sure, they maybe could answer that for you, but if I had to guess, it might be so that they could put it on their own property, because they don't own the general business property, they just got permission to place it there.
I assume they're here?
They are.
What's the future plans? What's the reason for wanting to rezone all this? What's in your plans?
Well, the reason we want to change it is, for one, yeah, so we could have it on our property as well, because our neighbor, he's planning on putting like a store in there, so that'd be for him, so we want to have our own. And also in the future, we're looking into, I'm in barber school right now, so we may later put a barber shop there, we could, or something. And that's really what we're interested in, too.
Do y'all understand the business side of it with paying the taxes and all that stuff that goes with that?
Shelley, I'd like for you to say again what would happen to the house. You ran that pretty fast, so if they left the house up for six months, clarify again what you said.
Yes, sir, no problem. So basically, if they tore down the house, they wouldn't be allowed to build another residence there while it's on general business for residential purposes.
Okay.
Or if they vacated it for six months and no one was there, and they are aware of both of those non-conforming use rules in our ordinance.
So if they vacated it for six months, then it would fall back to?
Oh, no, then the house would technically be something that shouldn't be on the property any longer. So someone could say it was a violation to have the house there at that point.
You couldn't use it for residential no more.
That's right.
And/or to inhabit it as a business?
You could use it as a business, though, yes.
Even if it was vacated for six months?
That's correct.
Okay.
Clear as mud. You just couldn't use it for residential.
Just for residential purposes, that's right.
Mr. Chairman, this is because having a residence in the general business district is a non-conforming use. So if you rezone it, then the residence as a residence becomes a non-conforming use.
Right, makes sense.
If it changes ownership, does it become a non-conforming use?
No.
As long as somebody resides there?
We have many properties in the county that are non-conforming uses, and the ownership has changed any number of times over the years, as long as the non-conforming use continues and there's not more than a six-month break, then they can continue to use it.
Learn something every day.
Yes, my understanding, if I remember correctly, when you first started talking, that once we rezone it business, then they could put any other kind of business that would conform to that area, right?
That's exactly right. That would be listed in the general business district of our zoning ordinance.
I did have one question in the, on the GIS printout, it was point seven-six-eight or nothing, we have the application as point eight-eight. And I don't know if that's based off of a survey yet on that slide there, so I'd like to something we need to look at.
So, yeah, what that is, is, so it's point eight-eight from the deed and then their application. That's a great point. What calculated acreage is to sum it up, and hopefully I'm doing this justice and the GIS experts can correct me if not, but calculated acreage is like the GIS software's guess at the acreage of the parcel.
We go by the deed.
That's right.
Mr. Duncan, that reflects that a certain amount of the point eight-eight acres is within the road right of way.
I assume that.
So when you subtract the road right of way out, that gives you the smaller number.
Thank you.
But a lot of property actually goes to the center line of the public road, and apparently that's where we got here.
So, Mr. Lackey, who tracks the six months?
Well, that's, no one tracks it.
So, I mean, how would we know that the residence was vacant?
You may or you may not, you know, but I'm not aware, anyone tracks these time periods for non-conforming uses around the county.
You would probably have to notice, or maybe somebody would have to make a complaint, and then the time period, you could start counting from there, but it may have started earlier, but you would not be aware until somebody probably complained.
In the past, evidence of occupied structure would include utility bills, things like that, delivery maintenance. So as long as there's no service interruption, say somebody had the power cut off and it was off for six months, and that's how, that would be the evidence.
I just want, you know, I want to make sure they understand what they're asking for, because it's rare that we get somebody who lives in a house and want to rezone it back to residential, you know?
Or to a business.
Or to a business, yeah, excuse me.
Which is where they're moving.
Yeah. Are you confident they understand?
I'm confident, but, yeah.
Maybe I've been an expert on that.
Do they live in the house? They live in the house?
Yes.
You live in the house?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, we've got to open the public hearing for this, and so I will go ahead and declare the public hearing open at this time and ask if anybody else has any questions or, Ms. Clerk, would you have anybody signed up to speak during the public hearing?
No, we've not.
Okay. And just for my reference, because there's some folks here tonight, I don't know who exactly they are, is anybody here besides the owners in reference to this particular issue? Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I wanted to give you an opportunity. We have had some folks that didn't realize what was going on and wanted the opportunity to speak, and so with that, I'll close the public hearing and ask what the pleasure of the board is this evening in either adopting this or if you have any additional questions. Y'all are all like I am, wondering.
Yeah, my fear, my fear is, and I shouldn't say it's a fear, my concern is, is I guess if they decide not to keep the food truck and what could it, what other business could be put there that might not be suitable for the area, especially with so many churches within rocks through. You got a church right across the road, and you got one just up the road a little bit.
Anybody else got a comment or?
This is a tough.
Do you have a list of what could go there?
I do have a list. Let's see here. Okay, so they could have animal hospitals and kennels, and there are some stipulations such as kennel fences shall be located closer than twenty feet to any property line, and then they could have billboards or off-premise signs. And this is considering their site plan submittal would be approved. You know, they can meet all the site plan requirements, which is a separate requirement, so they would have to meet parking requirements, site plan requirements, all that. A bowling alley or skating rink, a commercial cemetery, let's see, commercial and non-commercial baseball or mini golf, driving ranges, indoor paintball operations are all allowed in general business districts, food stores, fruit stands, produce markets, furniture showrooms, government utility and public works facilities, and governmental offices and facilities, motels or hotels, parks and playgrounds. And again, they would have to go through site plan approval and meet all of the requirements in terms of like the land coverage and stuff like that, like they couldn't just fill the whole parcel with impervious surface, for example. Retail sales or rental of tangible goods, service stations, and that is provided that all gasoline pumps are located fifteen feet behind the street right of way and adjacent property lines, solar energy systems level one. And then they have some special uses as well, and y'all know how that works, they'd have to get special approval. So they would also allow for retail, of course, anything allowed in office institutional and neighborhood business like retail, and that would be over twenty-five hundred square feet as well, whereas that's limited in some of those other districts. But by special use, they could have, if it were approved through the special use process and they could meet all conditions, and their site plan could get approved and would be workable in that amount of acreage. Flea markets are allowed by special use permit. Let's see, again, outdoor, commercial, non-commercial recreational activities such as paintball courses, rodeos, and similar activities excluding firearm ranges and ATV or motocross operations, provided a set of conditions are met that are listed here, and then, of course, if you wanted to add additional conditions, or if you thought that they couldn't meet the conditions, then it could be denied. Let's see, what else? There are a lot of conditions for that one.
My concern is me a little bit is you already got that big, already lot beside it that's general business, and then if you start adding more to it, you got a bigger lot of general business, and I'd feel better if many storage units were already built, you know, or something. Next thing we know, we'll see a Dollar General there.
Yeah. Heaven forbid that's going to happen. We're all thinking that, you just said it.
Yeah.
And there are a few more as well, telecommunications towers, RV parks, for example, and then for adult establishments, those would not be allowed if they're closer than a thousand feet from any residential structure, church, or similar place of worship, public or private elementary school, middle or junior high school, or childcare facility, and it's measured property line to property line. And again, that's a special use, these are all special uses.
So I'm assuming you, are they cooking the food in the house and then bringing it out to the truck? Is that how that works? Are you cooking in the truck?
We have to cook it somewhere where they allow us to, like a kitchen, like a restaurant. We go to a restaurant, cook it there, and then we bring the food to the truck, as well as like the- As well as like, uh, the water and everything, we have to go get it somewhere else, dump the water somewhere else. We can't do anything at the house.
That's environmental health law.
That's where I was headed with it, was the Health Department, Environmental Health, how does that? I got you.
But could that, could that be established here since this is gonna become general business?
Could that be established at the house? It could be, right?
To meet those conditions, yeah.
If they met the.
Be inspected.
Yep, they'd have to be inspected and all that stuff. They'd have to buy the right fire marshal, the fire hoods and all that stuff, but.
It'd be a big burden.
It'd be a lot.
I assume we do, we don't have any examples of this in the county where this type of, um, scenario is playing out where we have a, uh, food truck on a piece of property, I mean, they're pretty mobile. Food trucks are, and they set up, but this is gonna be something permanent. Do we have any, this is a first of this?
Um, this is the first request we've gotten for rezoning for one in the unincorporated area, that's right. I think there may be some in the city limits, but I, don't quote me on that, I'm not a hundred percent sure. And environmental health and building inspections are aware of this as well.
Are y'all being inspected now by the Health Department?
Have we been inspected yet?
Your truck? Because you're not cooking it there, right?
Not at the house.
Yeah. How about on the truck? Are you cooking on the truck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So they're, should be, be inspected, I would think, right?
Yeah, I think we're doing sixty-some odd food trucks, which.
Oh, there's a lot.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few in the county.
And more of them.
Most of them's really good.
They are? Yeah. They are.
You hit upon something in your reporting there, Shelley, but parking, and of course, we're, if this was approved, would be a general business. I remember some months ago, we had another issue of a, of, uh, rezoning and, and again, a parking issue came up, how many spaces they were gonna be able to have at a particular flea market under a special use and all that, but, but that doesn't come in to play here with just deeming this as a general business and, and we don't have to allow them, uh.
That's correct, but they.
Require parking?
But they would have to submit a site plan for their use with the parking shown, and it would have to meet our parking requirements on that as well.
So if they move this taco stand over to their property, does that then generate a site use plan, or because it's mobile, it doesn't?
Um, it would, yeah, it would, because they're using that property for general business purposes.
So it would come back again, or?
Oh, no, 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 we do that in-house, and building inspections would also have to review them as well as environmental health. But yes, we would look at the site plan in-house, look at parking spaces, um, setbacks and things of that nature.
So, do, do they know they've got enough available space now to, to deem this a general business? They're gonna have enough parking?
For this use, yes. But again, some of the uses potentially not, uh, that are listed in general business.
So I'm assuming, and they're using some water and things like that, i- is there a requirement for a sewer hookup or anything?
There's not, uh, unfortunately, um, some counties offer sewer, and there's not much ETJ close by, or, uh, you know, ideal spot for annexation, unfortunately, um, so they would be using septic on, on this site.
Yeah, and is there enough room on the site to install a septic system, I guess?
As far as I'm aware, I know environmental health is aware of this, uh, potential use, and they wouldn't have permanent seating with this potential use. But, um, as far as I'm aware, the septic system you have now, do you know if it would work for the food truck?
They're not required because they don't provide seating?
No.
Correct, they don't have a seating, so they don't not, they don't have to have a septic system.
Right.
The business may need to be evaluated, if they take the home and convert it to, say, a barber shop, they'd have to evaluate that, and there's a whole set of standards that the state barber board requires.
I'm a, I'm just a little nervous about that, like Jeff said, that big piece of property right next door.
If you got sinks and everything in your truck, where does that stuff go to?
They have to deposit it into a sanitary sewer system.
So they have to capture it?
Yep.
Just like a RV.
Very similar.
Well, I, in fairness, I want to say this, I, I rode out there today because I'm very interested in making sure, after our last, and I'll call it a fiasco of a Dollar General, that, that I want to know what's going on, so. But it, I'm, I don't have any problem with a business and all of those things going, and, and I didn't have any problem with storage units there, but I, I'm a little gummed up about egress and ingress off of the Collie Springs Road and getting in and out of a business that's gonna have people moving about. They don't have the best means of that either. Line of sight, Collie Springs Road, very busy. I don't know what the number count is of road, uh, traffic on that road, but it's, it's a pretty busy road, and, um, so anyway, those are some concerns I have, along with some of the neighbors out there and, and not knowing their, I know you send out notices and stuff, but it seems like oftentimes we'll approve something, and then we'll invariably get somebody that says, "Well, I didn't know about that," or "I didn't know it was coming up," and, um, and it just turns into a mess for us, and, uh.
It was the adjoining property owners that Kim notified, and then it's advertised in the paper.
Right, but I mean, I don't know what the readership of the paper and the legal ads is.
Understandable.
I know when I look in there, I get a little confused with it all, so.
Did you have a question?
Oh, no, I was saying, oh, yeah, we've actually spoke to our, uh, neighbors and let them know that they, about, about all this going on. Cause we've actually spoken to them.
Have y'all, have y'all had this truck somewhere else and moved it here, or is this brand new?
Brand new.
Okay. And you gonna be open, I guess, lunch and dinner?
Uh, yeah, we'll be open on Wednesdays through, through Sundays, uh, Wednesdays from eleven to eight, all the way to Saturday, and then Sundays will be eleven to five, uh, closed Mondays and Tuesdays.
And just to note, um, if any business proposed a site plan to us to move into that parcel, they would have, they couldn't cover more than fifty percent of the parcel with impervious surface. Um, they would have to seek a DOT driveway permit and see if DOT required that, which it does for most businesses. Um, and they would also not be allowed to create more impervious surface than the watershed ordinance allows, which is thirty-six percent without curb and gutter, or twenty-four percent, uh, with curb and gutter. So something really big couldn't go there unless they added onto that parcel, like with the neighboring parcel, for example, which is owned by someone else.
So are they gonna put another driveway in, or they just gonna use their existing driveway to go in and out of the truck, to the truck?
I think they were planning on using their existing driveway.
I got a crazy question for you. Since they're capturing all their stuff, they're not, you know, uh, i- is there a reason why they can't have that food truck on just a, their personal property? Is that, is that violating some sort of ordinance of selling tacos from a, from your front yard?
It, it, that's a great question, because home occupations are allowed.
Right.
So twenty-five percent of a home can be used for a home occupation for use like baking, for example, and selling. But because it's a food truck, that's what makes it different.
So how come this couldn't fall under a special use? Instead of just rezoning it, why, why we couldn't target it as a special use permit for a food truck?
Because we have a list of special uses that are in our ordinance, and what they requested was a rezoning to general business, um, where this is an allowed use, and the special use section, I don't think that that would be a special use in residential agricultural zoning.
No remedy.
So, so if, if, if they were just to sell tacos out the food truck at their front yard, who's gonna, who's gonna stop them? I mean, what's the, what ordinance are they breaking?
It would be the zoning ordinance, if, if they did that, you know, illegally.
So if somebody ca, if somebody called and complained, and we went out and said, "Okay, you can't sell tacos from your front yard," right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, mm-hmm, yeah.
Someone asked about traffic counts earlier, the traffic counts at that location in twenty-twenty were eight thousand three hundred cars a day.
Lot of cars.
Per DOT.
So.
All right, well, I haven't heard a motion that we approve this at all.
I'll make a motion that we approve it. I think, I think it's going, what's going, that other big piece of business is already there. I don't know where it's gonna make any difference with that other place beside it, but, and I'm, I'm either way, but. Planning board approved it, I hate, I mean, I don't know if we should or shouldn't, but.
What's the?
I'll make it.
We've done much worse, ain't we?
Yeah. My man, what's worse, it can be another Dollar General.
Well, don't go there.
I don't think that would work for that property.
No, I, I would hope not.
Only way it would work is if somebody bought both, both parcels.
Yeah. Do you have a question?
My concern, the question, I guess, is there's, I know of two, maybe three eating establishments on the Collie Springs Road, but of course, those are all zoned commercial. So, I mean, what, what causes us not to zone this commercial if we've already have two or three eating establishments along that roadway? Because then, I mean, I, is that makes, any, does that make sense?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, and, um, yeah, the planning board is recommending that it be rezoned, cause it's in alignment with the future land use map and comprehensive plan, and, you know, the request would not break any of the ordinances.
Yeah.
All right, well, Commissioner Branch has made the motion. There's any other questions or concerns before I call the question? All right, now those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I am opposed, I guess. But that's cool. It carries, so thank you again for all your work and all your questions.
Good luck to you guys out there. Hope the food's good.
All right, next is our item four this evening, and that's a public hearing for ambulance franchise agreement. And we have with us our EMS chief, Dino, D. Minority Emergency Services Director, I should say. The EMS chief's also here, but.
Yes, sir. So, uh, kind of a unique, um, presentation tonight. I will give you the thirty thousand feet view, and we can get very technical if you would like. We are here today for a public hearing, uh, for the potential issuance of a franchise agreement with a non-emergency and technically, and also emergency, but by title, a non-emergency transport, uh, company to provide inter-facility transports and discharges from our local facility to areas within Caldwell County. So, uh, general statute, uh, offers the counties the potential to have a franchise ordinance within their ordinances, which Caldwell County does, all, uh, counties in the state do. And, um, as such, in, uh, the general statute, so the law, the county is able to provide transport within the confines of, or whoever the county contracts with, within the confines of the county. So for example, a, uh, facility or a company providing transport for the hospital for Caldwell UNC Healthcare can come into the county, pick up at the hospital, and transport out of the county without a franchise. Tonight, what we're presenting to you is the, uh, option to provide a franchise ordinance to a, uh, organization, uh, North State Medical Transport, uh, to provide transport for discharges and also inter-facility transports within Caldwell County. So they would not only be able to transport from Caldwell UNC Healthcare to an external, uh, location, whether that be, uh, their hospital, to a residence, to a hospice unit, but also within Caldwell County. So they could also transport, uh, to residences, doctors' offices, other medical facilities, and locations, uh, within Caldwell County. The reason for this, obviously, this was a, uh, was, uh, long thought out. Uh, the call volume, of course, uh, for Caldwell County has, uh, consistently increased. The provision of nine-one-one services does not, uh, many times allow for the deployment of non-emergency. Those, um, transports, inter-facility transports, um, inter-facility specifically are the responsibility of the, uh, transferring or discharging facility and the receiving facility. And then those discharges, of course, many times do come in the form of medically necessary and sometimes, uh, non-medically necessary. Uh, have begun to overwhelm, uh, the service. So, by given, uh, the, the responsibility, legal responsibility, to provide nine-one-one services in the county, by providing those, they've started to place a strain on the department. There are multiple facets to this that we can absolutely go into, uh, but for the franchise, for tonight's, uh, public hearing, North State Medical, uh, came very highly, um, recommended, uh, throughout the state. They are in multiple counties, uh, in the central and eastern portion of the state. We have done a thorough background check. They have also, and I think each of you have a copy of the application, met all of the, um, requirements of our ordinance, as well as, uh, certain questions that we do as a county, require prior to, uh, the potential issuance of a franchise for, uh, the provision of these non-emergency, inter-facility, and discharge services within the county. The provision of this will be an improvement. It will offer some, uh, relief to the nine-one-one service. It will also offer a service to the public for continued transportation. There will be challenges, there is no doubt. Uh, we do have, uh, representation from North State Medical, and we have discussed many of those. Uh, the hospital is also in attendance, and, uh, they, they acknowledge many of those, so there will be challenges, both on the nine-one-one side, uh, the non-emergency and inter-facility side, as well as on the hospital side that will be, uh, continuing, and we're working through those. I will say through this process, the, um, lines of communication with the hospital has increased, uh, much, uh, to the benefit of Heather Falls, who is here. She's our administrative liaison, uh, with the hospital. There's still a lot of work to be done. I will be very, um, open with that. Uh, but this is a, um, this is definitely one of the cogs on the wheel. I think it will be a benefit, uh, to the, uh, public. I think it will be a benefit to the county, and it is the recommendation, um, you know, pending, uh, much of the progress that is being made, that we absolutely entertain the idea of, uh, issuing this franchise agreement, uh, for, uh, the term to be set by the commission, uh, to provide this service. Through the, uh, franchise, obviously in chapter one-ten of the ordinances, the franchise would be required. Uh, no franchise would have to be required for those provisions that I did tell you about. If, uh, you are not based in Caldwell County, you come into Caldwell County and transport out of Caldwell County, that does not require a transport. Technically, that could be done and is done, uh, on a daily basis. But in this form, uh, that application for franchise is required. Uh, North State Medical has met all of the, uh, requirements, uh, both by Caldwell County, uh, the system plan, uh, the also the county and the county's ordinance, as well as the state of North Carolina. The term, uh, is valid, uh, for a term to be determined by the county, provided that by either party, as its option, may terminate, uh, the franchise upon sixty days, uh, prior written notice. And each, uh, franchise provider shall comply at all times with all re, uh, requirements of this chapter. So they do function within our system plan. They'll be an integral part of our QA-QI process, which used to be, uh, the emergency services, or, excuse me, the county emergency council. Uh, so they will, they get QA and QI, uh, from the state. They submit all of their, uh, documentation, uh, reporting requirements, everything from, uh, response times, types of calls, patient care records, uh, and everything. All of that is outlined, uh, within your packet. Uh, it's a pretty lengthy packet, but we can absolutely go through that if you would like. And then, of course, I'll entertain any questions that you may have. I know that that is a very brief and high-level, um, representation of that. I, I'm trying to be brief with this, but by all means, if you want to dive into it, I can answer any of those questions, whether that be the general provisions of the nine-one-one service, uh, what they're hoping to accomplish, what we're hoping to accomplish, and otherwise.
I've got a couple of questions, Dino, um, for the benefit of the public. First of all, who is responsible for providing emergency transports in this county?
So, nine-one-one or transports?
Nine-one-one.
Okay, so nine-one-one would be call kind of EMS.
Okay, and as far as, uh, non-emergency transports from hospitals to another facility, whose responsibility is that?
So it's the requirement of the discharging facility, i.e. the physician, to facilitate transport by any means. So in theory, that does fall to the hospital, if the hospital has a transport unit, uh, that can be based in the county, or it can be based outside. So they can use any transport unit outside, as long as that transport is not coming, uh, you know, the transport is not going to a county. So inter-facility would be the responsibility of the hospital.
Okay, and we have spoken with the hospital about this. We've had meetings, I think you have. I know our county manager has, and, um, I think we had a couple requests of the hospital that, uh, we looked at. Payer of last resort is being one of the things in the contract. Am I correct in that?
So there is some options, uh, to enter into with the hospital, uh, so. In this, uh, deployment, uh, North State Medical would be primary, uh, and unless we chose to, would be the sole provider. In this deployment, North State Medical would be primary, and unless we chose to, would be the sole provider of transports, whether that be discharges, interfacilities or otherwise. They have offered some other services, and we will be working with the hospital to look at options. But yes, that is correct. There were multiple options given. Obviously, outsourcing was one option. Pair of last resort was an option. A contract with the hospital for us to continue to provide it was an option. And then multiple variations of that to include UNC Healthcare providing an ambulance, because they do provide ground and air transportation as well.
So if we grant this franchise, then they would be responsible for doing transports for the hospital at that point?
That's correct. So when we presented, when we made the change a couple of months ago, I don't remember exactly when that was, there was a pretty quick turnaround on a conference call with UNC Healthcare's administration from Durham. And one of the first recommendations, because they do use them, and Carly, I'm sorry, I can't remember, 16 or 17, I believe, counties? Is that correct? 15 counties, a lot of them tied with UNC Healthcare. They use them many times. So that was a recommendation of them, of a stopgap. Now, of course, with the general statutes and requirements of the ordinance, that couldn't happen immediately. So in the interim, they used us for some emergency transports. Then they also used other transport agencies, especially when they're going interfacility. Interfacility is very easily accomplished, I say very easily accomplished, as long as there are apparatus available. Of course, everybody's call load is high. But yes, to answer your question, they would be the primary responsibility. That would be the role they're taking on their initial deployment. Unless something has changed, and they can absolutely speak to it, would be a 24-hour ALS truck, so an advanced life support truck, and then potentially also a 12-hour BLS truck. And then they could expand or, you know, limit as that, as call volume dictated.
So I guess a question for them would be, what's the backup plan? If we get more than two transports from the hospital at a time, and both of your ambulances that are coming here are gone, you have another transport to come up, who's going to take care of that?
So generally, if these are non-emergent, if they were emergent, they would involve some of these, call 911. So generally, the hospital itself triages. If there's some that are priority, maybe they do schedule two. And they realize maybe one can be held off for a couple of hours if there is more of a emergent, non-emergent transport to maybe go to Frye Regional or over to Morganton Ridge. And in the case that all resources were maxed out for, you know, 10 hours out, we do have resources in the Orange County Chapel Hill area that we could deploy out to this area.
I'm going to call a timeout right here and declare the public hearing open. Because I think we're receiving testimony here. In the fact of making our decision, so. But I just wanted, wanted to say that and get that as a matter of record for our clerk to capture. And then, Dino, you might have this young lady identify, or you introduce her again, or so, I mean, you kind of went through that, but just so we know who the players are here tonight.
Miss Carly Coward with North State Medical Transport is represented. And then she also has representation of her communications manager, I believe. And then we have Heather Falls, who is our administrative liaison for, and I'm sorry, Heather, I don't know your title at the hospital, but she's our administrative liaison from Caldwell UNC Healthcare.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So more questions?
Relinquish to somebody else.
Oh, I've got a ton of questions. You covered some of my questions.
Okay.
I guess my concern is, is that, first of all, we've learned that, you know, we are not responsible for these interfacility transports in the county. And the hospital has, you know, put the burden back on us many times, which is disappointing. And I've learned that in many cases, the hospital has called a transport an emergency just to find out, just so they can get it transported by us, when it really wasn't an emergency. We've, we've got cases that are documented there. So are, is North State aware of the challenges that you will have with documentation from the hospital?
Absolutely.
Could you please approach the bench?
The wizard has spoken.
Yeah.
We don't know where that came from.
Man behind the curtain.
So absolutely, while every hospital is different, overall, of course, we do face challenges with every hospital. Medical necessity documentation are one of those.
I didn't know the terminology.
Yes, a PCS, Physician Certified Statement, which is a medical necessity form. We are well versed on that. Tyler Macemar, Communications Manager, actually resides in Yadkin County. And so he'd be really helping out in this area if this were to go forward. And, but that is something we've, you know, been in business 18 years. And it's a lot of education that we work on with the hospitals that we work with. And in pair, I know that, you know, and their team has worked with the hospital as well. And so again, it's education on both sides. It's something like you said, what might be emergent to a hospital is not emergent to EMS. And so it's just a learning curve, and with everyone working together. I mean, I heard the first two gentlemen talking about bringing, take 321, you want to bring more people to Lenore. With more people in Lenore, you're going to need more public safety resources available. With that, we would just love to support the team.
Well, I can tell you, you know, personally, you know, I've asked about this for three or four years. And I think it's a benefit to partner with you guys, because it does take that burden off of us. It helps both us and the hospital, because it provides that transport when they need it, when our trucks may be out on a 911 call. So I love the idea of it, but we want you to be successful here. If you come, because I understand you guys don't have anything in the, in the western part of the state. So we want you to be successful, and I don't want you to walk in something that you don't know what you're getting.
Absolutely.
Historically, the transports that we take are non-insured. We have a lot of non-insured transports. So that becomes a self-pay. I don't, I don't, I don't know the terminology, but it becomes a self-pay.
Self-pay, yeah.
That sometimes you can't get paid for.
Absolutely.
And I want to make sure that you guys understand the, the economic complex of the area. A lot of those transports, those people don't have insurance.
Absolutely.
So I want to make sure you understood that.
We do.
So how do you rectify that? I mean, how you get your money?
Yeah, and so generally, you know, we do facilitate, of course, most of our generating, our revenue generating transports are going far. They're critical care, they're ALS level. Maybe it's individuals on event going to UNC Chapel Hill, Duke, Charlotte, Mission out in Asheville. Regardless, we know in EMS, there are always going to be self-pay individuals. Of course, we do our internal billing, so we do contact the uninsured. Even if they can do $10 a month towards their bills, then we allow that, because we know it is a hardship. And we understand they're going to be uninsured, that's just healthcare.
Yeah.
And that's just.
So it's part of, it's built in.
Absolutely.
Built into your pricing model, I'm assuming.
You know, we get, we get the question a lot, any 911 service when they're providing a transport. Well, your bill's pretty high. Well, that's because a 911 service is not built, it's not set up to bill like that. So our bills are literally built off of providing treatment. We don't itemize a bill. So a non-emergency, whether that's an emergency or non-emergency, I don't, don't get caught up on the title. But whether that interfacility transport for a company such as North State, their billing structure is set up for the provision of those interfacility transports, where then they can itemize. It's built to the service, not built for the potential, if that makes sense. So for us, you're either getting ALS or BLS. There is no in-between where they, they can build their fee structure. And it is set up in showing in the application.
So, and I don't, I don't think this is questions for North, North State. I think it's more for the hospital. My concern, and I've shared this with everybody, is I'm perfectly okay with the agreement with North State. I think that's a great move. My concern is what Commissioner Wilkie mentioned, was when the system, when your system gets overburdened. Because we take, I mean, I've known us to take five or six a day. That's pretty common. Not, not one or two. Five or six a day is very common. So my concern is, is when we are called upon, because you're out of county, we have to take one, that how do we get our pay? Again, it's not North State, this is from the hospital. You know, insurance pays, Medicare pays. Well, if what's left over, somebody has to pay for that. It's not fair to the citizens, the taxpayers of this county, to put the burden on their back for somebody who does not have insurance at that hospital, and we not get paid for it. So what I'm looking for is, my concern is, what is the hospital? How are you going to fulfill the remaining amount of that bill? How are you going to pay the balance that's left over after insurance or Medicaid, or maybe a no pay, you know, is transported? That is my concern. Sure, be, absolutely, please do. Yeah. And by the way, we're hearing nothing but great things about you, Heather. I can't, I, I'm not trying to be.
I've been around for 18 years.
Well, you, you have been absolutely wonderful. So thank you for your patience and your.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Dealing with this stuff.
Thank you all. And Dino's been wonderful, and Carly has as well. So I really appreciate everybody's efforts. So I'm going to try to answer your question. So before I do though, to clarify, you're asking specifically for the non-emergency transport, so the relationship, the franchise agreement that we're entering with North State. If North State doesn't have trucks available for those non-emergency transports, for the majority of those, it would be a very rare occasion that we would reach out to Dino or his crew to ask for a transport.
So how is, how is North State going to transport five or six in one, in a 12-hour period? When they're going to have a truck and a half here? How's that going to happen?
So.
If they have to go to, if you have to take a, now, reason I'm telling you non-emergent, because just last week, y'all took, somebody I know real, real well, took a non-emergent to Baptist. Okay? So if you end up with, what the hospital says is an emergent transport. So you take them off to Baptist Hospital, because the hospital said it's an emergent. We need somebody to come get them now. We need to haul them to the hospital, right, to Winston-Salem. Then we find, that, so that truck's out of county, right? That truck's gone. And you don't have your other truck, because you're still contemplating on that other 12-hour truck, is my understanding, right? And we get called upon to take somebody to, you know, a non.
Gateway nursing.
Gateway nursing home.
Which happens all the time.
Gateway, great point, great gateway nursing home. Medicaid is going to pay us, Dino, what? Eighty bucks. Eighty bucks. And our transport fee is?
Base.
How much?
425.
425.
There you go. Who's going to pay the other $300?
Right, so I'm not prepared as the liaison to speak to that particular piece. But what I am prepared to speak to is, we have analyzed the data. We do understand, as the example you're providing, there will be those occasions. However, what we would look at is with the gateway example, we would have to triage that particular transfer to later in the day, or perhaps even another day.
Okay.
Versus tying up our 911 services and asking for that non-emergent transport.
This is, please don't take what I'm getting ready to say.
Sure.
Personal. It's not personal, I promise you. Because you're doing a fantastic job.
Well, thank you.
Without you, we wouldn't have got where we are today. So I appreciate your involvement.
I appreciate that, but I have to say, I'm not, I'm not alone. I, you know.
I understand.
We have a wonderful team, and I'm speaking to the team, everybody here in a wonderful county.
The problem is, if you're going to do that for North State, why the hell hadn't you done it for us in the last five or six years?
Oh, it goes longer back than that.
Well, I'm just saying, since I've been involved. So if you're going to, if you're going to stage these patients and wait for the next day or a later truck, you've never done that for us, not you. UNC Hospital has never done that for us.
The calls that I get.
Why are you going to do it for, why, how can you do it for them?
The calls I get is, why will the county not come pick up my loved one and take them to their house? You know, there's, there's an ambulance sitting out here at one of the bases. Well, yeah, it is. It is prepared to run an emergency call, what we're responsible to handle. Those get logged as far as convalescent calls, as to what is deemed an emergency or necessary. And then what's left gets put in line to when we have availability to transport those people. Problem is, in the past, we've not had the open line of communication that we seem to have with you now. So I appreciate you being here. And I hope this relationship continues to grow, because it's certainly not been a very good one in the past. But, and I unfortunately speak from experience having dealt with that before. I think one of the things that Commissioner Potter's alluding to here is the request that we had a pair of last resort. And I understand you're not prepared to answer that tonight. But if we do get caught with that, as already been said, we don't feel like the citizens of Caldwell County should have to foot that bill, when it's the hospital's responsibility to, to meet that.
Sure, and I do hear you.
When it's the hospital's patient, not, not Caldwell County EMS's patient, but when it's the hospital's patient, the burden should not be and will not be put on the taxpayers' back in this county.
Yes.
We can talk about a lot of stuff in the past, okay? And it's not, it's not pleasant stuff. I've communicated with other hospitals that work with EMS, and it's, it's not that way other places. So I'm anxious to move forward. I don't want to focus on the past, I want to move forward. And I hope this works. But I hope you will do, and you will do what North State needs to be done, not you, but the hospital, needs to be done in order for them to find success. And nobody has been able to answer my question about what happens to the money that's not paid. And until we can get that answered, I've got some, some concerns. I, I'm going to vote for moving forward with this agreement tonight. But I can promise you, I'm not going to take my foot off the pedal until somebody tells me who is going to pay the remainder bill. Or in some cases, may not be, it may be a no pay or can't pay, and we have to absorb the whole thing. That has to stop. And I, whoever you need to talk to at the hospital, because as far as I know, you're the first one that we've ever had. We've had people in the room, we've never had anybody come up and talk to us.
Okay, well, that's, that's really helpful information. We, we have collaborative sessions set up. We've just now moved them to monthly, and I believe I have that set up for this Wednesday, Dino. So we can certainly put that on the agenda.
We need an answer of how are you going to pay for that?
And you're specifically talking to pair of last resort.
I guess, is that what it's called?
For non-emergency transport.
It is, and I will say that, so we have learned a lot through this process. And having the new EMS MC consultants that's doing our billing has also helped us with the process. And we're now engaging, we being the liaison in this sense, instead of her being the liaison, where those actual pairs would be the skilled nursing facilities. So we're engaging those for contracts as well. Now, that would be a safeguard for the hospital, but also for us and for North State.
Right.
And I understand.
Exchange, we'll call it, like a call center almost, to where you can run, easiest way to describe it is the hospital, whoever the discharging physician is can make this call. If there's no non-emergency, whether that be North State, Blue Ridge, Uber, literally.
Yeah.
In the area, it can then fall to EMS, and they do pick up the bill.
Okay.
So there are, we have done some, and the hospital has been integral in that. North State has been fantastic. And I will say for EMS MC, that has probably been the most, this has been a huge, I can't imagine how much on, on Donald, but for us, it has been a tremendous burden on the workload.
It's his job.
But it has been, it's been eye-opening. So there are some safeguards. I do absolutely agree with you though on the interfacilities.
My, my goal is to hope that the hospital has learned something from this.
We absolutely have.
And we have learned something from this.
And I think Dino has shared numerous times.
And I, and I hope that your ER staff has learned that they don't control our EMS system. They don't have control over our system. We don't jump just because they say jump. And I hope that as we go forward, that we can, EMS staff, I mean, your emergency room staff, learn how to treat our medics and our staff coming in and out of there. Because the way I look at it, and maybe I'm wrong, I've been told I'm wrong. They ought to be tickled to death when that big boo-boo bus rolls up. And we say, here is a patient. Because guess what? You might not have got that patient if our boo-boo bus had to put it there. Our boo-boo bus can take it to Frye, we can take it to Valdez, we can take it wherever you want it to go. We want it to go. We take it to you, we ought to be looked at as a part of your system and a valuable part of your system. And not left out. We ought to be admired, and we ought to be told, thank you for bringing a patient to our hospital.
Absolutely.
And I'm done.
Thank you for that. And that's what, that's what we want as well.
Thank you.
And I do think.
Well, I've been told that, but it don't, it don't ever happen, so.
Yeah. So I think we're moving in the right direction. And I appreciate y'all's time very much.
I just haven't been able to talk to anybody, get it out. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
How long is this contract for?
So the term of the contract, I did confirm with the state, can be set by the county. For us, or excuse me, contract, the franchise. Our recommendation for the franchise agreement is, you know, right. Our recommendation for the franchise agreement is, um, you know, ratification, we, we do support it. Obviously, we would defer to you as assistant plan administrator. Uh, it'll be our job to help facilitate it, and to hopefully make sure that it succeeds. Obviously, that will be greatly hinged on, on our two partners as well. But as, you know, if you decide to set a, a term, it can absolutely be, there are terms almost always set on these. Uh, you know, in perpetuity would, is obviously an option, but you always have a sixty-day out by written, as well as, um, North State. At this point, the franchise agreement would be between Caldwell County Assistant Plan, Caldwell County Government, and North State Medical, you know, it is not with Call UNC Healthcare or the UNC Healthcare System. It would be us with North State Medical. So if you do choose to, uh, to set a tenure, that can absolutely be done, or it could be perpetuity.
What's a typical timeline in your experience?
Five years, it seems to be normal. There are some that have been one year, some have been three, and there are more that are five.
Well, I, I know, just from a business standpoint, that you're not gonna lay out the capital to make it happen unless it makes sense for you. You're not a public agency, you're a private agency in business to make money. So, I'm aware that you're not gonna lay the capital out unless it works. So what is the bare minimum that works for you guys?
I mean, of course, we always prefer longer, five years, but I think three is fair reason. Two or three, if y'all wanted to, beyond the more conservative. We're confident that it would renew.
Have you failed anywhere? So my concern is not you. My concern is getting the answers to that, what'd you call it again?
You're speaking of payer last resort.
Payer or last resort, I gotta remember that terminology. That is my concern, because I know, without a shadow of a doubt, that UNC Hospital, nothing personal, will do their best to stick it to us. And that is historically, okay, I hope it don't happen, but historically, that's not what's happened. We have, we have, we have a documented email where we sent bills to you guys, and you sent back, you can send all these emails you want, but we ain't paying it. Okay? So when I, we get emails like that, I get a little heartburn, and it makes it hard to do anything.
So if I may, we have learned a lot, and I've spoken out, and I'm saying we, saying collaboratively.
Sure.
And, um, while there, a lot of the responsibility would still fall on the hospital, we do now understand through the use of Kim Stanley and others within the billing company, that you would be surprised, more often than not, it's the accepting facility that actually is responsible. And so, we are working through, we've had now three or four sessions, and we're continuing to work through that. So I think you would be surprised at the percent, if we were to statistically look at it, that would fall to payer of last resort.
Okay.
I, I would agree that the vast majority of the improvements will hinge around PCS medical necessity forms, rather than a payer of last resort, though there will be those cases where that will be necessary, because as emergency services director and I rode the ambulance for a decent amount of time, there is no question that the call volume, not daily, but will overwhelm the system. It did today twice, we put, we don't put backup agencies on standby very often, and we did it twice today, so, it, it, and that's without doing transports.
You know how many times we've had conversations about those patient necessity forms?
Absolutely.
Over, and over, and over, and over, and over, and over again, and nobody listened. What makes us think they're gonna listen this time? Heather?
Well, that's a great question, we have done formal training, like I said. I know that at least three sessions that we've had,
Okay.
um, with action items, I send those out in the minutes, I get responses back. We have moved in the right, we are moving in the right direction, and again, I think we've learned a lot. I also think local EMS has learned a lot, um, in regards to billing practices, and we do have some standard work processes in place already, and I've been checking in, and I'm understanding from Dino and others, as well as the billing folks, that we are seeing a decrease in the number of PCS forms that have to be resent, um, that are missing an item, we've seen a dramatic decrease in that. So I do think our efforts are worthwhile, and we're seeing the fruits of those labors, of that labor.
Heather, I, I just wanna say, I don't want you to get the wrong idea.
No, please don't.
We want to be a good community partner with the hospital, we thank a lot of our hospital. We have some great people, I hear a lot of people, uh, that, that go there, that will tell me they were treated just absolutely wonderful by the staff. But I do wanna make it clear that until you came, we've not had the same response, I guess, from the, from the hospital back to us, as far as trying to partner with us. We've been considered, I guess, just a, um, tool for the hospital. And, um, we, we play a large role as far as pre-hospital care goes. We couldn't ask for any better than Dr. McClintock and what she's done for us, um, with our medics and, and with our first responders out here. She's done an awesome job, and, and most of us think, think absolutely the best of her, and would probably fight you if you said something bad about her.
I would never.
No.
But, um, I just wanna say, moving forward, and to be honest with you, my first thought was to recommend that we adopt this franchise for six months. Not because of you, but because we wanted to see what the hospital was gonna do, whether or not they're gonna meet what, uh, our expectations. And I don't think our expectations are, are far-fetched. I mean, in talking to some of the other hospitals, it doesn't seem like some of the EMS systems in these other counties are having these problems with some of the other hospitals. Am I saying that correctly? But we've had these problems for years, so, um, I would make a motion that we go into a franchise agreement with North State for a one-year term, and after that, we would look at extending that to possibly a three or a five, based on what we see moving forward. Not only the relationship with North State, but also with, with where we're going with the hospital. So, that would be my motion.
May, may I make a couple of comments? First of all, the public hearing hasn't been opened to any member of the public.
Right, and I'm, I'm getting ready to do that, yes sir.
And then I have one other thing I need to raise before-
Okay. So, we are in the public hearing portion of this, did we have anybody sign up? Madam Clerk that wants to speak?
No, we did not.
Is anybody here that wants to speak in this matter? All right, so hearing or seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And, uh, I would just wanna add one comment, 'cause I've let the, the left and right say a lot, and they're saying a lot of good things, but I hope this does away with the phone call that I get from somebody I know who is crying because our EMS can't get there and take their mother, their grandmother, whoever it is, back home or to a, a care facility, and, and giving me, uh, down the road as a taxpayer, saying, why can't that ambulance service that, that we pay for come over here and do that?
Give you a perfect example, real quick, and I know it doesn't deserve any defense, but I'll give you a perfect example for today. We had a very violent-
Inter-facility transport. Extreme emergency, there is no question there, it would have been taken without documentation had we had to do it. In that very short amount of time, to go from our facility to a neighboring county, the call volume overwhelmed the system, and the backup units were placed on standby. So the general public understands what that looks like, those backup units come from fire departments, and those fire departments are volunteer fire departments in many cases, uh, one career department. And by using, leaning on those fire departments, you're then taking away fire service personnel that if there's a fire, or if there's a wreck, or a gas leak, or collapse, or whatever it may be. Our next line of defense would be neighboring counties. Well, we routinely do standbys for, uh, our neighboring counties, some of them. And those counties are extremely busy too, there is no doubt that the nine-one-one service is strained. People utilize the pre-hospital and emergency care for, uh, you know, primary care, unfortunately. So, although we understand, and I get them, I have unfortunately been on the receiving end of this policy that we put in place with my grandfather, who did go to Call UNC Healthcare's ED, where we've had to say no to a transport. But I would reiterate the fact that every transport takes away a nine-one-one truck. There's eight, nine now counting our Blowing Rock unit, for eighty-two thousand plus people, depending on how it looks. And although that may sound like good, uh, numbers, two accidents take fifty percent of your fleet off, uh, the road immediately. An air facility transport takes two and a half hours, best case scenario, that's if you're very close by. So, I, I, I absolutely sympathize, I have been on the receiving end of both, the benefit of the transport, and the benefit of being denied for a transport for my own, uh, family. But I would just reiterate that that, that is what, um, you know, these, and I, I hate using the term non-emergency, because we understand now that there's non-emergency, there's emergent and emergency with transports, and, um, you know, North State will be able to handle the vast majority of those, but, uh, it is another piece of the pie to help provide that service. And, um, you know, by all means, Caldwell could deploy the assets had, uh, the hospital chosen to use Caldwell County. It would have just been an increase, uh, for what is already provided by the taxpayers of the county to provide nine-one-one services.
Does the hospital understand, in, in what he just described, the burden level, does the hospital understand the magnitude? Because I was told by probably three or four people at the hospital that you're doing the citizens an injustice by not taking these transports. But the hospital don't realize the injustice they're doing by forcing us to take them, or trying to force us to take them, because then our unit gets tied up, then we have to call a volunteer fire department, okay? Now, somebody's house catches on fire, you see the, you see the chain reaction there, okay? So I'm not real fond of the hospital telling me that we're putting a burden on our citizens. So I hope they understand that where that burden lies. Go ahead, David, you had something, right?
Yeah, my, my point is, I've heard reference to a franchise agreement. What the statute requires is a franchise ordinance. And, and I haven't seen in our packet that anyone is prepared to draft franchise ordinance.
So there is a franchise ordinance already in place. This would be, this would be issuing a franchise agreement under the ordinance to North State Medical. So the general statute only requires a ordinance, well, you can choose to have a franchise ordinance in place. All the counties in North Carolina do, to my understanding, per the state. If the county decides to, they can issue a franchise agreement to an entity, whether that be an emergency, non-emergency, or a nine-one-one service, you could choose, you know, private side, and they function in whatever form or fashion. For example, uh, if, if North State succeeds, which I hope and think that they will, they can actually offer the county some services as well. That's why many times there is a term set, because then you can update the franchise. For example, they could provide nine-one-one backup for us, they could provide desiccant transport for, uh, deceased patients, and things of that sort. So we did confirm with the state today that the ordinance is in place. Franchise ordinance dictates that Caldwell County EMS, Caldwell County, is the sole provider of services in the county, unless they choose to issue a franchise agreement to a third-party vendor, which in this state would be North State Medical Transport.
Yeah, I'm aware that the county has a generic franchise ordinance, but in reading the statute, one fifty-three A dash two fifty, it reads to me like each individual provider who is franchised needs a franchise ordinance. Is that the way your company ordinarily does this?
So, correct, so each, like, uh, Dino said, each county has their own unique ordinance, and if you were to grant us a franchise, we would adopt the franchise ordinance that was already set by Caldwell County.
So, so do you have, how do you ordinarily go into a relationship with a county? Is there a, again, is there a franchise ordinance just for your company? Or is there an agreement between the county and your company?
So generally, there is a standard franchise ordinance for each respective county, and if, um, the EMS emergency director, any company that they were to let in and grant a franchise, they all have to adopt to that ordinance for their county.
It goes into our system plan. So the change actually, then it switches from the ordinance into OEMS, the system plan gets updated, which we do have updated and would be submitted either by approval of the franchise in the morning, or denial, we would leave it as stands. So the, the franchise stands as it is, they would function under ours, so they, they have to maintain the same requirements that we maintain, they're functioning under our system plan. So they are a, they function in the same, uh, format that, um, Lenore Fire Department with their ambulance, Little River Fire Department with their ambulance, Blowing Rock Prior Two, you know, the rescue squads, North Catawba.
And I know that in the past, we have had contracts with some of those providers. Is there-
MOU or MOA.
In this situation, typically a written contract between your company and the county?
Nope.
I'm trying to understand, I've never been through this pro, we've ever done this before in my time as county clerk.
Generally, we are just franchised with the county, so the franchise agreement would be between us and Caldwell County EMS, under the North Carolina State of, or Office of EMS. And then the only really contract that would come on top of that is if we were to contract with a skilled nursing facility, or UNC Caldwell, or if we were to do mutual aid for Caldwell County EMS down the road, or, um, uh, dead, dead body transports, I believe. Yes, so we would contract, yes, we would contract directly with Caldwell County EMS in those situations, but for the general ordinance, we'd go under just general terms set.
I just wanna make sure we're doing this procedurally correct, I've never been through this, we, I don't, we've never done this before.
I haven't either, we've been on the phone with the state routinely throughout the past-
But you know, she brings up a good point, that, that's the deaths, you know, we really, we struggle with that, so.
For us, I'm in full support of offering expanded services, uh, but I felt in the best interest of, uh, North State that they don't jump in headfirst.
No, no, let's get this under our belt first, yeah.
And, uh, I would absolutely love to partner, we're actually working with the state now on our, um, uh, decedent transport, storage, and otherwise. We have a chairman, Church and I have had extensive conversations. There's a big challenge in western North Carolina for that as well.
Yeah.
And again, and that would not fall under that general franchise ordinance, but it could be between a contract between us and Caldwell County EMS.
Makes sense. Are you guys good with the year to start?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Good debate. So I'll call the question, as Commissioner Wilkie has made the motion that we approve this, uh, for one year, and to certainly revisit, and, and I assume, make a determination from that point, how much further we want to go. All right. So with that motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So, that is a four-one vote, but we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you, Heather. Very much.
And, and Heather, sometimes he gets passionate, don't take his passion as-
She knows me.
Yes, ma'am.
She knows me.
We all get passionate with our issues sometimes, so we do appreciate you, uh, being here. All right, uh, next is a public hearing for land acquisition on Hilton Road. Ms. Murray, who's been waiting patiently.
Yeah, yours gonna be as exciting as this one?
No. Nor as long. I hope. So, uh, you have in your packets the proposal to purchase the Hollowfield-McDowell property, thirty acres on Hilton Road in Saw Mills for the purpose of, uh, industrial development. The county made offers for, uh, two properties, both were accepted. And the development there would be a tremendous investment in Saw Mills. The property has the potential to add value, and jobs, and investment, and be really a transforming agent in that part of our county, as well as the entire county. We've also garnered the assistance of an engineering consultant, uh, to maximize the value of the property. We have, with the participation of the Saw Mills Town Council, also named the project, and so I'd like to show you three slides. This is the property we proposed at the, uh, last month's meeting with the commissioners, and you can see, it looks like, kind of like a hammer or an anvil, uh, and that's the larger piece, and then the bottom corner that fills all of that out, uh, is the McDowell piece, and that is Hilton Road that runs alongside it, uh, north and south, as you're looking at the, the picture. We've decided that naming it Evergreen Industrial Park gives a nod to the recently, uh, deceased mayor of Ga, of Gamo, of Saw Mills. And, uh, it just, it gives it something that is, uh, important to us for, uh, being green and sustainable, and, uh, standing for twenty-first century types of things, but also a nod to the history and legacy- and standing for 24th century types of things, but also a nod to the history and legacy of someone important to the town of Sawmills. Here you have the aerial, as things stand now, with the buildings proposed by the engineering company. You see 50,000 square foot buildings, four of them. And then one approximately 30,000 on the upper right-hand corner, where you have six 5,000 square foot units for warehousing. This is proposed, but wanted to let you see what we have been working on and hope that you would see foot to approve the purchase, and let us get started.
Commissioner, you already approved having a project set up like this in the budget when you adopted it. So we'd be using those funds, and it would come from the proceeds of sales of projects that we actually will approve here in a little bit to move into the fund for spec building development. So there's no new budget amendment for this. And we've engaged the engineering firm, and they've offered a very competitive price to begin full-blown engineering on the site. Geotechnical work has already started.
All right. So with that presentation, I'll open the public hearing this evening. And has anyone signed up, Madam Clerk, for that?
They are not.
Nobody's signed up. Nobody's here to speak in favor or against. So I will close the public hearing and ask what the pleasure of the board is this evening in making this land acquisition.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the land acquisition on Hilton Road as presented by Ms. Deborah Murray.
All right. Any other comment or discussion?
Deborah, any concerns about a brownfield here in this property?
No, sir. Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. What happens if we start?
That's a good question. So first of all, we look at orthophobes, and we had the mapping team pull everything out. The current use is the most intensive use that's been there, and that's been for a mulching operation. So we'd have to worry about organics, things like that.
Okay.
Be more concerned, not about environmental, but actually what God gave us is, you know, do we get into soft soils, or do we hit granite, rock, something like that? Typical Caldwell County soil conditions. But if we do find environmental, the worst thing you're probably gonna have is furniture or petroleum-based products. And those are very easy to handle. You remove them from the ground, you spread them out, you put 10-millimeter plastic over top of them, you let the sun bake the VOCs off, and then you put it in a landfill. Pretty simple. Now, if we run into something that's glowing, it's another story. We have experts for that. But there is no liability on the county, is that we did not cause those to happen. So our only concern is if we act and exacerbate the problem. So you just notify Dean or DEQ now, sorry.
Yeah.
And have them come in, do an analysis. I've been through four or five brownfields myself. It's not the boogeyman. You know, they're not gonna eat you. You just have to follow the process and call them and say, "Hey, we found something. Why don't you come look at it?"
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none. I'll call the question on the motion of Commissioner Branch. All in favor of this land acquisition, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Lots of work to do.
Yes, lots of opportunity.
Lots of opportunity. Yes, ma'am. All right, so at this time, we'll turn our meeting over to our county manager, and he'll read off our consent agenda for the evening.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all for being so patient, and I appreciate all your comments. Consent agenda, item A, is a budget revision for ARP funds for fire department support and medical director. You've already approved this in the initial budget, but we're moving the funds over. This is our assistant medical director, and we had just talked about our current medical director. This is in preparation for her retirement, leaving her office. Also, the medical director handles our COVID issues, as well as helping with the restart program. So this will continue those funds. So instead of you paying for it out of your regular budget, you're allowing that to be done through the ARP funds, which is a nice thing to be able to do. Item B is the, I don't know what the exact acronym for LIH WAP, LIWAP, but these are the Low Income Water Assistance Program funds. Essentially, our funds were doubled in the projected year. We got a notice after the budget was already adopted. So instead of 62,000 that we get, it's 124,000 additional dollars that we will receive this year. And that'll go to help folks to pay for their utility bills. We do have a budget revision for the purchase of a library bank using asset seller funds. So as we have vehicles leave the county service, whether it be, say, a patrol vehicle, or a truck, or a van, whatever it may be, we can take those funds and turn around and purchase this. The library was due for a vehicle replacement, and I'll be honest with you, they typically get a hand-me-down, and they just make do with it. This is a purpose-built vehicle that has shelving and drawers in it to be able to move and transfer materials and books between libraries. It's a very small, what we used to call a panel truck. And those have come back into fashion, and they're quite useful. And we were able to secure one through Steve White Chrysler out of Newton, North Carolina. And that includes the outfit and the lettering and striping as well for 35,000. We also have a budget increase for the Lynx program. This is federal funds to help foster children, $11,500. We also have a budget purchase of protective gear and firearms for narcotics officers, or narcotics team, as you've seen. It's been quite successful here lately, and they need this additional protection. This is at no expense to the county. These will be used for seizing forfeited assets. We also have a budget revision for the support of Munis by Tyler Technology, $30,000. This will move our current hosted software package system that runs the entire county. This is payroll, this is taking in taxes, everything. And it has generationally been upgraded, but the generations are so far apart now, no longer has IT support. So this will move it from a hosted server here to the cloud, which is, as we all know, is a giant bunker. Moves it there, and so we would get better technical support. In fact, Mr. Hilton can tell you that when we call the new technical support, it's kind of like, you know, they're drawing the short straw, who's gonna talk to us? Because the system is so old. So this would get us upgraded, and would move us, Tony, in January, February, is the plan? That is a massive needed upgrade for our system. Water tank maintenance program, we talked about this at budget time. We finally got our numbers to begin a water tank maintenance program where the tanks are routinely painted, flushed, and cleaned on a routine basis. And this is all five, or excuse me, all three tanks on a five-year rotation at 88,788. This will be the first year of that. A budget revision for the proceeds of the sale of the Westnut property to MDI. This is what we talked about, funding the Evergreen project with almost $800,000 will be our share. And we would turn around and expend that on building another industrial site. Continuing, basically, it should be an industrial development trust fund for the future. Budget revision, purchase of civic clerk agenda management software. Our county clerk's doing a fantastic job, and she's needing more and more tools. I think we can all attest, we've seen massive improvements on the electronic agenda in the short time that she's been here. And so now, as we get exhibits, they kind of come in in different methods, scanned in, some are digitally created. And so you see this kind of hodgepodge of exhibits. This will allow her to make better exhibits. It would also open it up for the other boards and commissions that you appoint to use that as well. And I'll let Abby answer any questions about it. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I just, I think that this will be great for department heads, for the community. It makes it easier for the citizens to access things. They can go in and they can search for specific topics. It allows them to go back further, and it gives the capability, the commissioners, you can go in and send messages as I'm uploading things, or as things are getting approved. So it's a continual process. I just think it'll make everything easier for everyone that's involved.
And item J is a big number, $1.7 million budget revision. These are purchases that we had planned in last budget, that, as we know with the supply chain, have not yet to arrive. So instead of having a whole list of 200-plus encumbrances, we're just letting those funds roll into the old budget, into fund balance, and then bringing them back out. So it's old money coming back into the new budget to do that. And includes trucks, assortment of vehicles that were ordered that have yet to be delivered. So it just allows us to keep moving forward with that. Some equipment, things like that. Item K, that is a rollover for the proceeds of the insurance settlement on the ambulance that was wrecked this winter. We've already purchased the chassis. It is in our care, and we're waiting to have that delivered to Texas so it can be remounted with the old body, and the old body repaired and put on it. And we're just waiting for a haul date, actually, so it can be taken down there. We may be trying to time out, if we're lucky, to have the chassis and the wrecked unit hauled as one load, and the new ambulance that's waiting to be finished, one of the new frontliners, delivered back on the same trip. We're trying to coordinate that, to save us a little bit of money. And also, we have the minutes, and then appointment of Chairman LaBros as the voting delegate for the Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference. And then we have various change orders for the animal care shelter. These are the result of, one is a need for the automatic watering system to reduce staff time on our mini kennels. The others are coatings and finishes on the walls, so they last longer as dogs scrape and scratch and tear down. And then some are to prevent the spread of disease and bacteria coatings that the state has asked us to add. And that is new under the state administrative code. They came about after we already started the design process. So luckily, we have the funds to pay for those. And then reappointing of Mr. Clay Wilson, who is also the deputy, I'm sorry, the vice mayor, or mayor pro temp of Sawmills, to the planning board. And we had the last item, and we added, which is the strap grant program for streambank restorations and cleaning, to be focused in the Lower Creek area of $259,437. This is a soil and water conservation district grant. Most of the grants that they had in the past never went through the county's budget because they were very small, isolated, $5,000, $10,000 here and there. With a six-figure grant like this, it has to be procured and bid out. So they're already starting that process. This is just bringing those funds in, so Tony can track it, and we make sure it's spent properly and goes through the proper purchasing agreement. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board in adopting our consent agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve this evening's consent agenda as the county manager has presented.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So with that, we're coming to the end of our meeting this evening, in which we're gonna enter into a closed session. So I'll make a motion, we enter into that closed session pursuant to 143-318.11A4, and that is to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in our area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations, or discuss matters relating to military installation, closure, and/or realignment. So do I hear, in the affirm, that we enter into this closed session? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we will now enter into closed session. We want to thank you for attending this evening and/or joining us by TV, and hope that you have a good evening.